Good evening, everyone. I'm very happy to announce this evening that we have a press release to give to our constituents, those that are present and also those that are watching on the videos. I'm very excited this evening to give this press release in the effect that under the press release, we have a term agreement with the United Bank for the pay off the EDA loan. Now I'll turn it over to our town, Jennifer Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, and welcome to the citizens and the press this evening. As you know, my name is Matt Teedrick. I'm the interim town manager for the town of Front Royal. As it relates to this press conference, several members of council would like to say a few words this evening. After the last speaker, which will be Ms. Thompson, I'm going to ask the press if they have any questions. For council, please go to the podium and I'll help moderate the best I can from this position. The order of the speakers this evening is going to be Councilman Bill Seelock, Councilman Chris Holloway, Councilman Gary Gillespie, Councilwoman Lori Cockrell, Councilman Jacob Meza, and as I stated, Councilwoman Latasha Thompson. We're here tonight to share the good news that the mayor just mentioned. In an effort not to bury the lead, the town has a confidential agreement in terms to pay for the authorized debt of the Front Royal Police Department. Overcoming the obstacles placed before the town by the EDA and the county, the town has taken the first step at putting to bed a major issue of three lawsuits, which I might add was zero help from the EDA or the county. We all know about the scheme of the embezzlement, theft, theft, misappropriation against the town, county, and EDA perpetrated by the former executive director of the EDA. The victims were the banks, the town, the county, or better said, the taxpayers of this community who to this date are still demanding and waiting for justice. The town has continually tried to pay for the authorized debt of the construction of the police department. Countless times, the town has reached out to the EDA, but frankly, their finances and accounting have been and continue to be in tremendous disarray. I do believe the current board is trying to recover from the scheme. I understand that. However, we still have issues that needed to get resolved, like the police department debt. When the EDA refused to work with the town and truly understand the town's perspective and considering the EDA is insolvent and the county is paying their bills, the town tried to resolve this matter with the county. That experience turned out to be more frustrating and frivolous than dealing with the EDA. The town got a lot of rhetoric and no action. But yet again, the town did not stop at trying to do the right thing and pay its authorized debt of the police department. Since we could not get anywhere with the EDA and we could not get anywhere with the county, we decided to reach out to the bank that is holding the EDA's debt on the police department, United Bank. We had a very candid and transparent conversation. Reasonable people had reasonable conversations and produced reasonable terms for all. It needs to be noted, as far back as March 2019, the town attempted to file an application for a bond at 3.25% for the police department. The EDA insisted we pay nearly $500,000 more in unauthorized principal. Therefore, we would not agree on the payoff and cannot apply for that bond. In July 2020, the town of Front Royal postponed the hearing of the EDA's $21 billion lawsuit we filed because we were very much trying to work things out with the county and most importantly, trying to agree on the principal debt for the police department and possibly resolve the suit itself. On March 13, 2020, we again tried to apply for a bond application, but the town could not agree on the payoff that EDA was demanding, so we could not apply. On March 25, 2020, our legal and finance team and I reached out to United Bank, who is holding the unsecured construction loan for the EDA in an effort to see if this bank would turn the EDA's loan into a conventional loan with the town of Front Royal. Happily, after a great deal of discussion, on September 16, 2020, I received a draft term sheet from United Bank, which I did not agree to because I felt the town could get slightly better terms, and we did. On September 17, 2020, coincidentally, less than 24 hours after I received the term sheet from United Bank, the EDA called for a special meeting on Thursday morning and filed a frivolous complaint and writ of mandamus against the town. On Monday, the council authorized me to ratify the term sheet from United Bank. As I stated previously, the terms are still confidential, but you will soon discover the details. It's not the new market tax credit deal, but it's a darn good deal for the citizens of Front Royal. And it takes a load off the county and the EDA who are obligated for the debt, saves their credit ratings, and this loan will put a bad chapter of our history behind us. This is a huge win-win for all parties, but especially the town taxpayers who are saving over $1 million in interest and $0.5 million in principal compared to what the EDA was demanding. Before I turn the mic over to Councilman Seelock, I would like to thank the law firm of Damiani and Damiani, who did an absolutely fantastic job working with the bank's law firm and I might add, paid for their legal fees 15-fold over on just this one deal alone. I also need to thank our finance director, BJ Wilson, town attorney Doug Napier, and especially the United Bank. Together and with countless hours spent trying to do what's best for the citizens of our town, we've taken a giant step forward by resolving a major obstacle regarding the dispute between the town and the EDA. Lastly, I need to thank the town council. You've had to bite your lip countless times on the advice of attorneys for over a year. Faced with what you have endured, lesser statesmen would have cowered and would have been gripped in fear and the inability to take decisive action. You never gave up. You never quit. You never wavered. You continually fought for the town taxpayers and the truth. As a town citizen and taxpayer, I truly cannot thank you enough for standing your ground. With that said, I'll turn it over to Councilman Seelock. Thank you.
Yes, Bill Seelock? I've got six points I'd like to make. The elation that I saw on this council the other night on the first notice of a term paper with the United Bank, the amount is significant. Tax savings for our constituents, and I'm very pleased that we weren't forced into a higher rate by other individuals ever on this council previously. We were told to settle at 3.75% to pay off the debt we chose not to. We, town council, took the position that our staff, which I commend heartily, plus our lawyers, who pushed and shoved and worked with the United Bank to get us a feasible rate that we directed the staff to do. With that said, we've got to talk about dollars. If we would have settled on the higher tax rate, which everybody was forcing us to do, it would have been somewhere around $4.8 million that we would have been paying. We have a significant reduction in savings to this with a lower rate, a savings of over $1 million. That's significant. When we tried to go to a bonding agency, we were stopped because we could not get the EDA to work with us to get feasible release so we could apply for the bond. They stopped us. They looked at, we looked at significantly. We went through every nickel, dime, and everything that was portrayed for the police department, and we came up with 8.4. We all agreed, 8.4 million dollars. Now I see the EDA is asking for 8.9 million. There has been no negotiation, no discussion, just a countersuit. All I've heard for over a year is, why don't you negotiate? We tried negotiation. That will be told hair short. There has been no negotiation with the EDA or county, even when we tried. There's been no discussion or full disclosure on the $0.5 million. It just magically came up this past week. No discussion, no nothing. Just pay us $500,000 more. That is very disturbing. After the elation of this council on hearing that we finally got a term sheet, we get a countersuit for additional $500,000. That's why I'm elated in one piece and sorrowful in the other. No negotiation, no discussion, just boom, countersuit. But I am pleased that this term sheet will save this community a lot of dollars, over $1 million, which was our objective many, many times. That's my speech. Chairman, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Seelock. I believe Councilman Holloway is next.
Thank you, Mr. Teedrick. Last week, I defended the town and did my best to outline the situation we have that we've been up against. There is no dispute that the Warren County Board of Supervisors oversaw the EDA. It appointed all board members and provided funding for the EDA operations, but it did not actually operate the EDA. By law, the EDA is a separate political entity empowered and in fact required by statute to act on its own behalf for benefit of the residents of the county and the town and the Commonwealth. Again, by statute, the EDA is operated by a board of directors. The directors make decisions, take action, and are accountable for all actions taken by the EDA. The EDA board hired an executive director, Jennifer McDonald, to act as its primary manager on its behalf. The EDA gave its executive director, Jennifer McDonald, some good authority to access and use funds earmarked for the town and county development projects, and then absolutely failed to oversee her use of these funds. As a result, millions of dollars of town and county funds were stolen or misused. Those are all facts, no exaggeration, and completely indisputable. Based upon those facts, the EDA is responsible to the town for the wrongful acts of its ex-executive director, McDonald. Instead of accepting some responsibility and being accountable to the citizens and working hand in hand with the town in good faith to rectify the mess created by its employee, the EDA board, as instead taken a regrettable and unseemly path of pointing fingers everywhere but at itself and attempting to avoid the consequences of its massive failure of oversight. The town has made repeated attempts to work with the EDA and troubleshoot and resolve the issues the EDA negligence created, but has largely been either ignored or somehow blamed by the EDA for the EDA's own failings and misdeeds. As it relates to the police department, the town does not dispute that it agreed to fund the construction of the headquarters for the police department, nor does the town dispute that it knew that the construction would require the EDA to obtain financing. As has been stated for over a year now, the dispute regarding the police department building centers on the promises made by the EDA to the town council that it would obtain financing for the police department according to specific and favorable financing terms, and the EDA's ex-executive director, when asked for an update, she stated, and I quote, "The money is in our accounts," end quote. This turned out to be a lie, and it was discovered later that it was one of many lies. So in actuality, the loan actually obtained by the EDA to build the police department is very different from the loan that the EDA promised and that the town council approved. The loan obtained by the EDA would result in the town paying millions of dollars more in interest, millions of dollars. For a year now, we have been beaten up in the local tabloid newspaper to pay our bills, to pay for the police department, to pay our debts, on and on and on. We have always wanted to pay what we've authorized, and we continue to want to resolve this matter, but the EDA or the county would not allow us to pay what we've authorized to pay and resolve the rest at a later time. They thought they could control the town, beat us into submission. Well, it didn't work. We have to protect the town's taxpayers. That's our job. In a similar vein, the town has been paying and will continue to pay any and all debts incurred by the EDA on the town's behalf that were authorized by the town council. As such, as repeatedly and constantly told to the county and the EDA, the town has been willing to make payments to the EDA for the police department headquarters that are equal to the payments that the town council authorized, which included the entire principal debt and authorized interest rate. But as you soon will discover, the board supervisors would not allow that. The actions taken of the EDA have brought us to the point where we are today. The EDA's reluctance to take true responsibility for its actions and find compromise has caused the town to go directly to United Bank. The loan we are about to obtain, under these very favorable terms, pays off the principal borrowed, which no one disputes. Unfortunately, it should have been the EDA to work with United Bank. It should have been the EDA to facilitate these fantastic terms, and it should have been the EDA to come to the town and try and help. But sadly, that was just not the case. Instead, the EDA continually blocked our efforts, so our town manager, our attorneys, and staff went to United Bank directly. They were honest, transparent, with the bank, and United were willing to help, able and eager to give us a permanent financing to pay off the loan. It's been a pleasure working with this council. We're actually getting things done, and I'm really happy to be one step closer to getting this police department paid for and off the table with the EDA. There's more to be done, but it's my belief it's going to take the leadership to see the EDA scandal truly resolved and work out in the coming months. Like council, I refuse to let the EDA scandal define us, whether it's fake news, fake social media, accounts, or fake facts. We have kept our mouths shut and our heads down and continually trying to resolve what we could, and today is the first step in greater things to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holloway. I believe Councilman Gillespie is next.
Well, thank you, and good evening, everyone. I want to thank the mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Teedrick, and to town staff for all of our work that you guys have put into this deal. As Chris stated, the town has been and continues to pay all authorized bills, expenses, and debts to the EDA and everyone else for that matter. And I fully agree with Chris. The town will not pay any unauthorized debts of the EDA. Additionally, the town tried all last year and most of this year to work with the EDA to resolve the Afton Inn and the police department and other issues. As it relates to the Afton Inn, many town citizens have come up to me and said, "Gary, you need to do something about that building. It's just embarrassing," and I completely agree. I'm ashamed of how it looks, right smack in the middle of the town and the county. The EDA and the board of supervisors should be embarrassed at what they have allowed. The town does not own that building, and there was little we could do to have, oh, I'm sorry, I missed my spot. The town does not own that building, and there was little we could do to make the EDA get that project finished. And let's remember, there was a contract to renovate the Afton Inn that the EDA killed that contract a year ago. The board of supervisors likes to remind town citizens that they are also county citizens when it's convenient. Well, I would like to remind the board of supervisors that property in the town is also property in the county, so you have a duty to get this Afton Inn renovated. Regarding the police department, plenty has already been said. We have the police department, and we're thrilled to death with how well it turned out. As Chris stated, the principal amount was never the issue, and we wanted many times to agree to pay that and resolve any balance at a later date. But neither the county nor the EDA would let us do that. But this is important. Town staff and town council never gave up trying to resolve what we could. The town continually tried to work with the EDA and the county, and I'm here to say we are still working in good faith with the EDA and county. But not on one occasion has the EDA or the county worked with the town. Not once. Lori Cockrell will soon talk about, no, Lori Cockrell will talk about when she started to have informal discussions with a couple of supervisors. And it was because of those conversations that the town voluntarily offered to continue the hearing, which was scheduled for July 27. Because in good faith, we truly wanted and still want to work out this nightmare with the county. In another effort of good faith, the town voluntarily offered to pay the police department construction debt that was voted on and approved by council. We offered a simple, one-page reservation of rights agreement, which by the way, EDA Legal Council authorized, which stated upon other things. The cost and the loan for the police department are under legal dispute, which no one can argue this point. The town and county are in discussions which may result in amending the town's claims in the litigation, which is a great thing, trying to work out litigation. The town denies it owes any moral or legal obligation to repay the loan, and a big footnote here, United Bank said the same thing to our attorney. This statement has no impact on the county or the EDA, so no issues here. Nonetheless, and I quote, "As a show of good faith and to facilitate continued discussions with the county, the town hereby tendered payment in the amount of $10,528.95 for the July 2020 payment for the loan, claimant one, the loan." This amount has been calculated with reference to the new market tax credit program as detailed in the litigation. Ladies and gentlemen, the town council called a special meeting on June 30 to fast-track this agreement, which again was authorized by EDA Legal Council, and the town's legal council was signed by the mayor that night, and the agreement was delivered to the board of supervisors for their approval. And I might add, we had the check printed and ready, but the county never signed the agreement. The board of supervisors would not sign the agreement authorized by the EDA's legal council. They never gave a reason why they would not sign the agreement. Of course, we never gave them the check. Ladies and gentlemen, that's what we have been dealing with here. Another good faith effort by the town was squandered away. Yes, thank you all for hearing me out, and now I'd like to turn it over to Lori, please.
Thank you. So in June, as you know, Councilman Holloway and I began having some informal discussions with supervisors, votes, and colors, and the purpose of those discussions was to try to find some common ground with regards to the EDA and the police department. We all felt encouraged and optimistic that we might be able to resolve some of the issues that we were facing as a result of Jennifer McDonald's tenure as the executive director of the EDA. As July 1st began to near and a payment needed to be made on the police department, the town very swiftly made arrangements for what we thought was a good faith payment to show that we were willing to work with the county towards a resolution. Some resistance to the legal jargon and the reservation of rights, which Councilman Gillespie just discussed, as well as the amount offered, prevented the county from accepting that payment. Some healthy discussions continued even into July, and these conversations included compromise and creativity, as we all thought we were working towards an agreement that both the county board of supervisors and the town council could live with. Our attorney drafted a letter of intent laying out all the points that we had gone over in our informal discussions, things such as reorganizing the current EDA, with the town and county both appointing members to serve on the EDA board, the town sharing the responsibility of paying a portion towards the EDA, an amount that had mirrored the original figures when the county and town first created the EDA, and we also asked to have an EDA staff member who would focus their efforts on the town's economic redevelopment. That letter of intent stated that if the previous things mentioned could be agreed upon, that we together, the board of supervisors and the town council, would try to find favorable financing for the police department and that the town would pay 27 interest-only payments on the loan based upon the new market tax credit terms. The letter of intent went on to say that if the above things were agreed upon, the town would non-suit their lawsuit against the EDA and instead join together with the EDA and their lawsuit to try to recover the millions of dollars that the citizens of Front Royal and Warren County had stolen from them. As I stated before, we were all optimistic that we could come together as the town and county to best serve the interests of all of our citizens. The letter of intent was delivered by Mayor Teewaak, chairman Maye, and August, and although we thought we had covered all of the things that in our informal discussions we all thought we could live with, for some reason unbeknownst to me, other members of the board of supervisors did not want to see us come to a resolution. I want to acknowledge that I personally appreciate all the time and effort that supervisors, votes, and colors, as well as Councilman Holloway devoted to trying to find a resolution. I also appreciate the mayor and town council's support and willingness to compromise and work towards a resolution. However, as my father always said, if you can't get in the front door, sometimes you have to go in the back. The town did just that, securing our own financing, which will be in extremely favorable rate and terms, will save the town's citizens a tremendous amount of money compared to what was offered by the EDA, which Councilman Seelock outlined. I am absolutely relieved to have this monkey off our back and hopeful that we can now move forward. This doesn't mean that we still will not be seeking to recover the money stolen in the EDA debacle, but this is one step towards some healing that I believe needs to happen for all of our citizens.
I think, Ms. Cockrell, I believe Mr. Menace is next.
Thank you, Mr. Teedrick. Well, I am truly excited that we're able to announce tonight that the securing of funds through the loan to pay off the debt service of our beautiful Front Royal Police Station. And I know this press conference had a great positive note, and if you can't tell, I think that some council members are excited to be able to clear the air on some of the issues that we've had to, that we've been discussing and had to keep quiet until the time is It's certainly great to stand up here and share the positive news in light of the months of misinformation that continues to be circulated by local media and even candidates running for office in our local election. Now that it is public that the town has agreed to terms of a loan for the PD with United Bank, I would like to take this opportunity to clarify a few points. Council has always intended, council has always had the intention of paying for the new police station, but has struggled to get documentation of an accurate loan payoff from the EDA. Don't mean to have too much redundancy here, but you'll hear some of it. Without the documentation of accurate total funds dispersed, the town cannot secure a traditional loan, even if we wanted to, couldn't secure it. Any good financial institution would require the documentation for a loan approval, documentation the EDA could not or would not provide, and has known only been using to hold the town hostage in negotiations, all the while maintaining that the town is not acting in good faith. The irony of the recent lawsuit against the town is not lost on me. What is particularly frustrating is that some are scrutinizing the town, insisting that the town is behaving in a fraudulent manner by not paying for the PD, while the EDA is represented as a victim because they are struggling to meet their financial obligations due to their insolvency. Need I remind everyone that the town is a victim in the EDA scandal and that the lack of the board oversight of the past executive director landed us in this situation to begin with? And speaking of oversight, even after millions of dollars lost through the EDA, the EDA has yet to complete a financial audit of their accounts since 2017. Can you believe that? There has yet to be an audit completed in the EDA. I feel like that should resonate a little bit. So when it comes to agreeing on a payoff amount, the rhetorical question that follows should be, should the town just take the EDA's word for it? should be, should the town just take the EDA's word for it? Well, we've done that before. Many people are asking the question about why the town needs to create its own EDA, and just putting aside the fact that we're, the fact that we're in a legal dispute with the current EDA, as others and I have stated, the current EDA has not been able to complete an audit since the corruption was uncovered. They are financially insolvent, cannot borrow money on their own accord, thus rendering them ineffective as a standalone entity that is designed to facilitate economic development opportunities within our community. For me, the question is not whether the town should set up its own EDA, but rather how fast can we get it done in order to help our economy out of its downturn and take charge for the future of our town? As previously mentioned, the town has continued to work this problem to no avail. It was only due to creative thinking of town staff that they were able, that we were able to go straight to United Bank to work out the terms. And I want to take this opportunity to thank our town staff and United Bank on the tremendous efforts, their tremendous efforts in overcoming the barriers put in front of them and figuring out a way to secure funding so that we can move past the spreading of misinformation and so our police officers can enjoy their new home without the constant criticism. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mesz, I believe. Ms. Thompson, your last one.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I thank everybody, all my council members have covered everything, so I get the easy part. I would just like to also thank Matt, DJ, the attorneys, the staff who worked hard on this. The only thing we've ever wanted was a number, and we kept getting different numbers. Being able to go to the banks directly and securing this financing is a huge win for all of us, every single one of us. And from here, we can just move forward and continue on this path and get out of all of the legal mambo that everybody wants to see end. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. Mr. Mayor, anyone have questions now?
Yes, if anyone has a question, please come forward.
Any press?
But before you do, uh...
Press?
I just want to make sure that, you know, I agree with some of the statements made tonight, but I don't agree with a lot of them. You know, I think we have tried to work with the EDA, I think we've tried to work with the town Board of Supervisors, and I think that we have gone way overboard tonight with this press release and trying to make everybody look bad. And so I want to apologize to anyone out there that agrees with me. Thank you. Do you have any questions tonight?
Press.
I believe it's your press.
Press.
Gary, just the press.
Oh, just the press.
Roger, do you have a question?
Since the press release, Gary, oh, it's not open to the...
I'm sorry, didn't make that clear.
Sorry.
Wouldn't get a copy of the press release? Hard copy?
There is no hard copy of a press release, it's just a press conference.
All right, there's been a lot of accusations about a lack of cooperation by the county and the EDA, especially on the Police Department negotiations and the promises, verbal promises, I understand, of Jennifer McDonald on the 1.5 new market tax credit interest rate. Does the town have anything in writing to verify that promise that it was true? Because I think, as I recall, late 2016 and early 2017, council was told by the administrator of the program that he did not have the loan, were still competing for a limited amount of funds, and I think that the town manager then, Joe Walts, and the finance director both recommended a 2.65 interest rate because the 1.5 new market tax credit was such an unsure thing. Again, I guess my question is, do you have anything in writing to build that promise that you stood on?
Let me address that.
Well, I'm really not sure. I know we signed a resolution that it said we assumed that the interest rate would be 1.5, and never specifically stated 1.5% of that, which just came from Jennifer McDonald and our negotiation with her, but as far as the resolution, what he sent to the EDA Board for approval did not descend as soon to be 1.5%.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want to remind you that we're still in the midst of litigation with the EDA, so I think we have to be very careful what we represent in public based upon legal advice from council we received, so I just wanted to remind council members of that. Thank you.
Any other...
I actually have a comment as well to speak to what Roger said, because I know that you inferred that there was a lot of accusations and stuff, and I just want to point out that my comments were meant to be appreciative of the people that worked with us. And so I apologize if I came across as that being negative, because as you know, I was going in in January, and so a lot of these things occurred before I was here, and my natural instinct is to try to work together, and that's what I know that we were trying to do starting in June as well as Cheryl and Dolores were. So if that was your interpretation, I just want to say I didn't do a very good job expressing that, did I?
One more comment that I'd like to make to that as well is, you know, obviously some of this is in legal dispute as far as the terms go, but what I could say is, regardless whether or not the EDA, the town came to terms on the interest rate, we have offered to pay the full principal and continue the litigation of the interest rate, not withholding the funds required to pay the debt service on the police station. I think that's an important part, so when you're asking the leading question of the interest rate, I don't want it to be implied that that is what was holding up the funds for us paying them. Again, we, I think, articulated that tonight, that that was a check that we were willing to write to pay for the debt service of the building.
Yes, I would like to, I'd like to comment as well. We negotiated for $8.4 million. Now, the staff and myself, the interim town manager, our accountant, we all finally sat down and looked at every nickel and dime that was spent on the Police Department, and we all agreed 8.4. We even had the EDA preaching to us about 8.4, why don't you pay it? That's what we agreed to when we had all this negotiation at the table, looking at documents over and over. Just this past week, now they're saying it's 8.9. I haven't seen the first document that says, where did you come up with the additional half million dollars? So like I said, I was elated when we got the term paper on the 8.4, and now the number changes. I worked in federal government as a contractor. If I worked a project, I better have every documentation of every dime that I spent. Is that right, Mr. Rappaport? Right down the line. I haven't seen it. We haven't negotiated, we haven't talked, but they're stating now it's 8.9 million dollars. The elation came with the term paper. Now I've got a downfall because where's this 500,000? It's never been negotiated or discussed.
Could I respond to that?
Sure. I see the chairman, the acting chairman of the EDA here, are they going to be allowed to respond to any of this? Because I think from my understanding, past conversations at EDA meetings, that 400,000 to 500,000 you're talking about may be the interest that's already been paid, but he could explain that better than me. I think that the 8.4 is the principal balance remaining, and the 400,000, 500,000 is already paid interest, but I could be wrong, but I think he would probably answer that.
I missed your question. I missed your question.
I was just trying to respond to where that extra 400, 500,000 came from. I think this interest has already been paid.
Roger, we should not hear it from you. This should have been discussed long and hard between the town and the EDA, which has not. Okay?
What kind of fooling machine, you gotta...
Don't call me out, Commissioner Seelock, don't call me out, okay? If that's the case.
I just want to say, good job, because you should, I would never, as a business owner, a person that has run an organization, pay a nickel on a debt that could not be listed out to me. And I don't understand what people are out here upset about. If you were able to figure out where the loan was taken and how much was owed on the loan, that's the best good effort you can do if people aren't providing what you need to make an educated decision. And I want to say, I think you guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, I kind of want to nail down what you guys have done. Do you have an interest rate of 1.87% or what kind of interest rate do you have?
No, we can't discuss that.
You can't discuss that? Okay. Your loan is, what, 8.4 million?
Can't discuss specifics.
All right, I hear those. All right, so my understanding is that you all have a real organization with the EDA? Maybe that if you could enter into it with the county board, that you may have disregard the current EDA and bear on the new EDA?
I believe what you're referencing is, was a letter of intent that the mayor ratified on August 3rd and sent it to the county, and the county never, never sent anything back to the town, so that letter of intent is off the table.
Okay. All right, so you guys are still moving forward with your own separate EDA?
I believe so, yes, we're advertising full positions, and we welcome anyone who would like to apply, we've gotten several applicants already.
All right, well, I apologize, I was looking forward exactly what the interest rate is and what you all are doing forward, so, but anyway, you have a good interest rate? Interest rates are historically lows right now, so I apologize for going, but you know, best thing to do, move forward. Are you all looking forward now to entering some type of negotiation to where you can settle the case with the EDA? Are you all planning on moving forward with that case? What is your...
I think that's inappropriate, I think that's affecting our attorneys, our case with the EDA.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Bridge, did you have something you wanted to say? Any other press?
I do.
I got no more.
Yes, I am, I'm a citizen journalist, I'm considered...
Mr. Bridge, is it, do you have any comments?
I was going to ask a question as to why are you not releasing the terms of this latest agreement?
Yeah, great, great question. It's a, the bank has it as a confidential term sheet, and they have a meeting next week, or after, probably next week, we'll be able to release the terms.
So that they need to, it's on their end now, they need to do their, whatever the process is.
It's a normal process that they go through. First, you have a non-binding term sheet, it's confidential with this case, and then they'll have their committee meeting early next week, and I was told as of 5:00 today that everything looks very positive, and we'll be able to release the terms probably next week.
Is it closer to, or is it below the, I guess, the interest rate that was presented to the town that the EDA...
Yeah, I believe I would not be violating any aspects of the term sheet to let you know, it is, it is below the 3.75% that we were trying to get prescured into last year and other rates.
Okay. Is there a total, I know it's 8.4 million for the principal, I don't suppose you could say how much interest would be on top of that?
Not right now.
Hopefully.
Okay. Nice one. One more, Mr. Bridge, can you?
Laurie, I believe that the negotiations you were talking about were the reservation of rights agreement negotiations?
The couple different, yes, the things I was referring to, reservation of the letter of intent.
When you, when you were talking about you and Chris talking to, I believe it was Dolores and Cheryl?
When we were discussing things that we thought that each body could live with, we talked about things such as that, is that what you're asking?
Right, well, my question is that if it was the negotiation or the reservation of rights agreement, what actually was offered by the town other than a half-monthly interest payment that was recoverable in return for the county and EDA signing off on the fact that the town had no moral or legal obligation to pay anything on the Front Royal Police debt? That's what, that's what I saw in that first draft of the agreement.
Yeah. Any member of the council want to address that?
That was a good faith effort to pay the debt service that was coming up on the loan for the PD while we continued to discuss the other terms of that agreement, again, articulating the full intent to pay the full debt service of the PD. So that's, that's what that was, to continue that conversation so that we weren't up against a hard line, and that both the board and the council could have the opportunity to discuss those terms. Mr. Teeger?
I would add one thing, I believe the way Mr. Bencini characterized the reservation of rights and after, and I have a copy of it that I'll give you this evening, which will refresh your memory, all it does, it reserves the town council's...
I was talking about the first draft.
Well, this is the ratified document.
I mean, I have, I have both of those documents.
So are you referencing the first one that they did not agree to?
Yeah, yeah, the first one.
Right, yeah, so the first one's off the table, so they came back and said the first one was off the table, and the EDA's legal counsel, in consultation with the town's legal counsel, drafted the second document, which both parties were agreed to. This document was provided to the Board of Supervisors, and we never got a formal response back, we never got any edits back, we never received any documentation as to what was wrong with this reservation of rights, so we just ended up, after approximately 30 days, I turned the check back over to the finance director so it could be voided.
Quick follow-up. Was the shorter one, the second one, was that also a recoverable half-month payment of $10,000, thereabouts?
It reads, "As a show of good faith and to facilitate continued discussions with the county, the town hereby tender's payment in the amount of $10,528.95 for the July 2020 payment on the loan. This amount has been calculated with reference to the new market tax credit program as detailed in the litigation." So it's, it's a very innocuous, it's a, it's a common type of document, even the EDA attorney recognized that, but regrettably, the county did not, did not accept it, they didn't sign it, they didn't accept the good faith effort of the town.
So now I'm still not clear from that reading, would that have been a recoverable $10,000? Or once it's paid, once it's paid, it would have been...
It would have been paid, I mean, we, we've never, as, as you've heard probably seven or eight dozen times this evening, we've never, there's never been any dispute as far as the authorized debt as it relates to the PD and what we authorized in public in order to pay for the PD, so there's, that's never been a dispute. That's why the town thought it'd be good to have this good faith gesture, and it was summarily dismissed, it was not, there was no reply, formal reply from the county on this document nor the letter of intent that was sent on August 3rd. Thank you. Any other press?
Yep, I'm a blogger, hello.
Any other press?
I'm considered citizen journalist.
That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, may I please ask a question?
This is a press release, it is not, debated in the press release, now we can't...
It isn't.
No, it's not in the press.
All right, everybody, we should read more of the review paper.
Me and you, Jerry.
Thank you.